Excellent. Welcome, everybody, to the regular meeting of the Larkspur Planning Commission. Today is Tuesday, March 11th, 2025. And first order of the agenda is a roll call. So let's do that.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Commissioner Swisher.
Here.
Commissioner Chalmers. Commissioner Hull. You have a quorum.
Excellent. All right. So one thing we'll do is ask for any public comment on matters that are not on the agenda. If there is anything that's not on the agenda that anybody would like to discuss here. Or on Zoom.
If you're on Zoom and you want to provide a comment, please raise your hand.
All right. Okay, number three, the Community Development Director's report.
Good evening. On March 19th, the City Council is going to be hearing a presentation about building electrification and potential modifications to green building requirements. And the other announcement I had was we have a new administrative assistant in the Community Development Department. Her name is Laura Beth Smithheimer, and hopefully we'll be able to meet her soon, but it'll be a new face at the front counter.
Okay.
That's it. Thank you.
All right. All right, then let's go into public hearings. And the first matter on the agenda is, excuse me, One Redwood. APN 021044-08. Kenneth Holder is the applicant. Jeff and Leanne Trehan are owners. Our one first residential zoning district project PLN 24-10. And it called Request for Planning Commission Approval for the following permits. Number one, designer view to permit the demolition of the existing residence and the construction of a new 3,075 square foot two-story, three-bedroom, single-family residence. Sorry. With an attached 532 square foot garage. Garage square footage is included in the total size of 3,075 square feet. Number two, a variance to allow the garage to project into the required 20-foot front yard setback and the southern wall of the residence to project into the required 10-foot street yard setback. The garage would be 17 feet from the property line or three feet within the setback and the southern wall would be nine feet six inches from the property line or six inches within the setback. A slope use permit to permit 403 cubic yards of grading on a property with a slope of 25%. A FAR or floor area exception that permits a floor area ratio of 0.359 207, 2,780 square feet, whereas 0.25, 1935 square feet is a maximum allowed by the municipal code. And finally, a heritage tree removal to permit the removal of a heritage-sized oak tree, which is centrally located on the subject lot. Can we have the city report, please?
Yes, let me share my screen here. Okay. Good evening, Commissioners. The item before you, as you've just heard, is PLN 2410 for One Redwood Avenue. I think we're all familiar with this, so I'll move a little quickly through the presentation, but here's an overhead view on the right of, on the left, excuse me, of the property with the property lines outlined in blue. And then a Google Street View of the existing property where you can see the existing residence, parking pad off to the right of the image. So as you're aware, this will be the third time you've met on this project. The first time was at your August 12th meeting of last year, where you took public comment, provided feedback and voted to continue the item. Your feedback at that meeting centered around reducing the size of the residence, retention of the existing oak tree, and reducing the visual bulk and mass of the residence by, including lowering the plate heights. The second meeting was a study session held in January. The project was redesigned to reduce the size, retain and retain the oak tree. And the commission was supportive of the reduced size of the project, though they did suggest additional detailing on the southern wall to break up the mass. And I'll get into it a little bit more later, but as we hopefully all remember, the city arborist reviewed the revised plans when they had proposed to retain the tree and found that it was not feasible given the impacts and did recommend that it just be removed. So the project proposes demolition of the existing residence and construction of a new 3,075 square foot two-story residence and attached garage, which requires designer approval of designer view, a floor area ratio exception, a slope use permit, a heritage tree removal permit, and two variances to the setbacks. And then this slide will show you the site plan. The reductions are shown in this red kind of crosshatch, which may be hard to see here. But pretty much the entire footprint has shrunk fairly substantially. But the general layout remains the same. And here are the proposed floor plans. Really, the the big change would be the lower floor. The ADU has been removed from the scope of work. It's now just two bedrooms. And here are the elevations. And this one's a little easier to see on this, the slides, the blue dashed outline that's just showing the outline of the original proposal. So you get an idea of how the the mass and bulk of the structure has been reduced. So this would be the front elevation, which is the east elevation, and the south elevation, which is the one you see as you come up Redwood Avenue. And here are the west and north. This would be the rear of the home and then the elevation seen by the adjacent neighbor on Redwood Avenue. The project, as we've said, requires a floor area ratio exception because of the slope of the lot. It would normally be limited to a floor area ratio of 0.25. They're requesting a 0.35 FAR. And the original design, when you included the the square footage of the ADU, was a 0.46 FAR. So just getting back to this heritage tree, they are proposing to remove the existing oak on the lot. And just as a reminder of the timeline, the project was submitted and reviewed. And there was an original submittal that happened in 2021 where the city arborist reviewed and found that the tree was healthy. And then the commission recommended retention at its August hearing. It was redesigned, the project was redesigned to retain the tree when the city arborist reviewed that. The same city arborist reviewed that revised plan in 2024. He recommended that it be removed because all of the work would affect the critical root zone and likely kill the tree. And so based on that revised report, this, the commission recommended removal during its study session, and that would also allow this current design before you, which pushed the garage back towards the center of the lot. The property does require a slope use permit. It's approximately 403 cubic yards of cut and fill down from the original proposal of 498. This is the grading plan. It does have the old layout, which will be updated when they apply for building permits, should they be approved. And as designed, the home requires two setback variances, the first in the front yard where 20 feet is required. As you've heard, the garage is 17 feet from the front property line. And the southern wall is a street side yard setback, which is normally 10 feet. That wall is proposed to be nine foot six from the property line. The deck does overhang that wall, the deck off of the upper story living space. But there are provisions in the municipal code that allow that projection. So staff has included a condition of approval, number 14, which would require that wall to be pushed back the six inches to meet the the 10-foot street side yard setback. You've received actually two public comments now, one from 340 Madrone, which was generally supportive of the redesign and requested screening for their shared property line. And then a second from a neighbor who lives, I believe, at Four Redwood, who just had some concerns about the size and fire hazards and the cedar trees, which are required to have tree protection measures installed, which are all detailed in the arborist report and included in the conditions of approval. So in conclusion, staff recommends that the commission hold a public hearing, take public comment, and approve the project subject to findings, conditions of approval, and a Class II sequel exemption. That concludes my report. I can answer any questions you have, and the project architect is here as well. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions from the council further? City? So I'd like, I have one. And well, Natasha, why don't you go first?
I was going to say I have one question, but I might wait to hear the applicants. And then come back to you, Alex, with a question about the wall, actually. It's about the the wall that on the south side.
So my question, I just want to be clear, what you're recommending is that the six inches is taken back and so that it should, this is, is that should comply with the setback?
Yeah, the condition of approval that's included would require it to comply with the setback.
And what does that do in terms of, does that change square footage of the?
It would be a fairly minimal reduction. I'd be pushing the wall six inches, so maybe a few square feet.
Of the interior.
Yeah, of the interest. Okay. Right. That's all here.
And wasn't there a recent letter relative, a neighbor letter relative to the oak tree also?
Yeah, that was the, well, there was one that you, I forwarded you this afternoon.
Yeah.
That had asked if it still wanted that tree retained. Yes, that I'm sorry, I think I failed to mention that as part of it, in addition to the cedar tree protections and and the other items.
All right. Architect or applicant?
Good evening. I'm Kenneth Holder with Holder Parlette Architecture. And Ken Field, it is a pleasure to be here again. Now at our third round on this, and I, it is worth really taking the time to thank you for you, you folks putting your time into reviewing this. The last study session that we did in January was extremely helpful, very informal and and it, it perhaps also allowed what I would say is that chance to kind of slow things down and to give us more of a chance to incorporate community input. And of course, it's that reminder that these sort of things do impact the entire neighborhood. I think what happened, this site had much more sensitivity than we anticipated. So the open dialogue, of course, gave us a chance also to have two different rounds of neighbor meetings, Zoom sessions that we've held. Whoever wanted to show up came in, we had comments, and that was a really great venue. And I think I'm gonna probably professionally make that a stipulation for any projects like this that go forward. Because it gave a chance in a less formal for people to talk like neighbors. And so that was helpful. The second, it helped us understand that parking is paramount. The lack of, you know, omitting the ADU, not 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 using that at all, and just putting everything on the on the level of what Jeff and Leanne wanted for their house. It actually, I think it makes for a much stronger application. We have continued, we we even, I think, further reduce the square footage from, well, we came in with the study session following the recommendations that the arborist said retain the tree. And we said, well, to get into the site, to do a two-car garage, off-street parking, this is what's going to have happen. And when we sent that to the arborist, the objective voice in this case, I think he strongly removed his support of retaining the tree. So so that took us back to kind of our original overall attitude to the site. And I feel that that coupled with really considering each person's perspective, the height, the bulk, the mass, the setbacks. We've stayed true to what the what the homeowners would like and considered what the neighborhood would like. It's a, it's a very sensitive lot. It's and I think making ourselves available to hear that directly made the difference. So there's all kinds of areas of question. It's worth at least coming back to just make it clear how that six-inch overhang happened. We misunderstood about one of the setbacks. We've agreed that this six-inch encroachment into one of the side yards, we would absolutely correct that. We've, and then in terms of Commissioner Chalmers, you hadn't made the request to really try to deal with that front wall facing Redwood. I don't know that we came up with the most creative solution. The windows changed. We're talking about planting it. It's already so compressed under the redesign that we, other than having the upper deck kind of extend out and and proposing a much more elaborate planting down below, we're hoping that that would reduce the overall massing of that site. But it should be noted that we are actually pushing back from the existing structure. The existing house that's on the site, the large red existing dwelling, the what's proposed is well back from that and at the basically the same height. So it's so, so in fact, the story poles disappear into the existing roof line. So there were no story poles on those two points. So if that helps understand the Balkan mass at that point, there is that point of reference. So one of the things that I think was a high point is talking with the family that's immediately above the house at 11 Redwood. I think making ourselves available, multi-point email, trying to respond to every single point and altering. You can see in the design, some of the things that we tried to accommodate or will accommodate as this goes forward. Including an important element, which is screening trees, evergreen Arbuthous Marina trees that were requested. Multi-trunk, we have a secured source for those. A tree that would all four seasons would, I would really strongly help to reduce the overall apparent mass. And unfortunately, that is the problem. On a steep site, you have someone above you looking down. And so rightly so, they were requesting adjustments and changes in that area. So and included in that is the element that the master bedroom wing that extends closest to them has been perhaps the most significant reduction in the entire house. The master suite has been been compressed by four feet and three feet and four, and then actually brought down four feet as our the height has been brought down four feet in height. So the story poles are actually quite short out there. I don't know if you can so actually, this is an, this is a good view of that. The, where it says master bath, that wall, that sidewall that would face uphill towards their property line, it's been compressed and shortened, but also brought down by four feet. That's a significant drop. So in fact, this master bath is nearly complies for 50% below grade now. It actually, if we didn't have the garden patio there, it would be more than 50% below grade. So those are the kind of efforts that were made to reduce the impact on the uphill neighbor. So I think that, I think I think they, these neighbors are perhaps the most impacted and understandably have had plenty of questions. We've made ourselves available at every chance we can to address that. But it's, it's, you know, any house there is going to have some impact on your neighbor. So in case there's any questions about I mean, I think we established at the last hearing that the tree, if your town arborist even retracts support of retaining it, it's kind of hard to then say, go ahead and retain it. So I think we established that, and I'd rather not go backwards on that. It enabled us to put in a standard garage, off-street parking. The things that would ensure public safety in terms of getting in and out of a cross-slope garage driveway. We feel that the overall massing of the house, we've actually darkened the color. It's proposed to be darker. Later, we started thinking, what are ways to continue to reduce the overall impact? A darker medium gray stained siding would help the house even recede further. So those are, those are sort of the measures that were taken to consider other people's impact. At our last hearing, I don't know that there were, at our last neighborhood meeting, I don't remember there really even being any significant questions or concerns. I think folks were generally quite supportive and appreciative. We are, of course, at this point, I think the value of connecting with neighbors has been really reinforced. I think Jeff and Leanne have really committed to saying, hey, would not everything has to be resolved at the design review level. We're neighbors. Let's figure out if you need additional screening or if you need other considerations. We're open to discussion. And I think they've shown that to be the case. So we've been at this. At first, the the original submittal was almost two and a half years ago. And we've been at this actively for six months to get to this point. I feel very strongly about this application. So open to any questions you might have.
So I had a couple of questions about the trees. No objection to taking the tree out. How many, I know you have the landscape plan here. How many trees are you actually putting back in or planting?
I would say the part that would affect others, there's five total trees that are proposed. There, you know, we consulted with our plant and our, our plant selection specialist proposed two live oak trees in the front yard, what you would call the front yard for the site to basically replace the loss of the the full oak tree is she's proposing two, I think they're 36-inch box oak trees that would be placed, and you can see them along the, along this, in that, unfortunately, the it's almost easier to look on the lighting plan because the, the, the landscape, the the landscape plan were required to put the wooie fire suppression overlays, and it makes it kind of hard to read that.
Oh, here, so the two oak trees, minimum 36-inch box. I see that.
Right.
Okay.
Those are the trees that I think will impact people the most, that it act as a nice screening effect. So you can kind of see them here. Here's the entry. So these two trees, originally I was proposing three, and she said that wouldn't be appropriate to put trees that can reach that sort of.
So two oak trees and?
Hi, and then, and in the, there was the request to put three screening trees there, Arbuthous Marina, which of course, evergreen, drought tolerant trees, very low, like zero escape.
The ones you referred to earlier, right. So what about these three oak trees up there too?
You know, if you see, is there some reference to three oak trees?
I see it on my plan.
There might have been a mistake. There, there were different. It's
So those, those are not going in, just, there's two. Yeah. Are those being removed? No, it says in a box.
There are three 36-inch box oak trees called out on the landscape plan.
It's on A 1.2. Sounds like you're replacing it with the other trees, but.
It's interesting. I'm, yeah, I only am aware of the Arbuthous Marina that I, I, I'm not sure. That may have been a really early. And that's, I'm very sorry, I, I'm about to confuse you, but they, no, they would definitely be, it'd be better as, as an evergreen tree.
Okay.
Has full age, all four seasons.
I guess what I'm getting at is it would be good to just make sure that there are trees going back in.
Oh, yeah.
And there is some something in writing, Alex, I guess, that's in here. And it sounds like this isn't quite accurate, but there is going to be the two oak trees near the front, the three evergreen, you said, I, I don't know the name.
Called, it's a pretty common screening tree, also known as a strawberry tree.
Oh, yeah.
Australia. It's a rugged tree that, that, that uses very little water. So they, they're quite a common specimen for this.
But to clarify, that's, that's going to be a requirement to put the trees in.
Yeah.
Right. Okay. So we'll just confirm that the tree description is accurate. Right?
Yes.
Before you were done. Okay.
There's, I, I, and of course, understandably, the downhill neighbors have concerns as well. And I have a feeling they're going to want to suggest that we can talk about different ways that that could be done without necessarily having to come all the way back here. I would, I believe there's enough rapport between between neighbors to just resolve that. Of course, there's the sensitive issue of a paper street that exists right here, which is technically legally off limits to planting anything, but it is a natural buffer between. It's actually just, you can just see that there's, their houses here. And I imagine they're going to want to talk about that and just make sure that there's some reassurance that their privacy concerns are considered.
That's encouraging to hear, and I, that would be great.
Right. And, yeah, and that's the advantage of having slowed down, giving this all more of a chance for everyone to get to know each other and create an open rapport.
And then the other question I had was, it was just a question really for staff, was in your report, you had you had a statement here about the wall could be broken up further to reduce the perceived mass of the wall. Is there something you had in mind? Or something you wanted to recommend for the commission to hear?
Not particularly. I didn't know if there was an appetite to, like, can a lever of the lowest portion of the the, the part where it touches, I would defer to the architects of, on to what is feasible. But I just know that the commission had recommended further breaking up, and I didn't feel that you know, window changes might be what, exactly what you were thinking of when you had said that. So there, there may be other options.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So now, public comment. So for public comment, again, let's just make sure that you introduce yourselves and limit yourself, if possible, to three minutes of comment. Do we have any public comment?
Andy Truss, I'm at 11 Redwood. To your point, I'd just like to clarify that we can get that in writing, the three trees will not be the oak trees, and they will be the just to confirm, because there are two sets of plans that I saw as well. Just to double check to make sure that's clarified in these, in the minutes.
That's, if we can do that.
Yeah, you could just add a condition of approval, if you want, to your motion, saying definitively that there will be those trees.
Yeah, I mean, we, I think we should make sure that we just correct that in whatever we approve. Yeah. Thank you for coming up.
And there's just a couple. One other thing that we'd mentioned in our, in our session with the, with the architect was, I mean, it's a minor thing, but the way that the, the place where the porta potty is, is is situated, we'd like that moved, because that's not reflected in the new plans as well, during the construction time, sorry.
Is there another place it can go?
Go somewhere else, but it's still in the same spot. So we had seen a plan with it moved. And so we just want to just confirm that.
Okay.
Is that an issue? Can we, is it? Okay, great. So you guys can work it out where the porta potty should go. Excellent. Any other comments?
All right. If you're on Zoom and you'd like to comment, please raise your hand.
That was my next. Thank you. You get it, Dan. It's, it's English. It's an English thing, I think.
Can't let go.
That's why we have our own country. All right. So seeing none on Zoom.
Bring it back.
Bring it back to the mission for comments. So let's start down. It's all.
I would like to, I'm, I'm happy to see the changes. Excuse me, I'm, I'm losing my voice. And in all the feedback that we gave you guys in January, happy to see a lot of that incorporated. And so it sounds like the six-inch setback is going to happen. Okay. Because I know that was what staff recommended. You had mentioned, Mr. Holder, about the neighbors at 3:40. I don't know if you knew that they sent an email yesterday saying that they were concerned that there was a large number of the project's windows on the west side of the house that side faces our kitchen and outdoor living rooms, where we spend the majority of our time, perhaps planting some screening trees. So clear that that's still an issue for them. And then the neighbor at four sent an email today about making sure, they still want the oak tree to stay. But making sure that there's a moratorium on noise for the endangered owls. And something about the cedar trees. So oh, and then the outdoor fire pit. We didn't talk about the outdoor fire pit. So that, that's in this latest design, I think. I don't remember seeing it in the previous design. So that's a concern that Four Redwood has brought up. I didn't really think that much about it. And so maybe that's something that do we approve? Outdoor fire pits? Is that something that's under?
In Larkspur, the, as far as my understanding, you can't have outdoor fires in Larkspur. I think that's not legal.
So the, the fire department did review the plans. He didn't comment on it directly. I did reach out to him after getting that. He said he believed that there was an exception for this type of fireplace that they were talking about. But that he would confirm with me tomorrow. So it would be something that if it were actually an issue, it would get pulled at the building permit stage.
So you would take care of that?
Yeah, we can do it administratively.
I, I mean, if.
And those cedar trees are not coming out, right?
No.
The cedar trees are staying in place.
No, and they have tree protection measures that are
Yeah.
provided in their arborist report and a condition of approval to, to adhere to those.
Thank you.
I'm just having gone through this myself, I think, with an outdoor fire thing, and it's got to be no spark, open spark. And I don't think you, there's a burning moratorium for a large part of Larkspur during a lot, a lot of the year. You can have gas fireplaces, but they have to be contained as well. I mean, that's something, like you say, the building permit can. But they have to be contained as well. I mean, but that's something like you say, the building permit can, building department can work on that. Uh, it's a concern though, of course, this is a high fire risk area. Uh, as far as the screening trees that the neighbor mentioned, is that, do you have a plan, a planning plan for that? Yeah, the architect has, yes.
What I understand, what I understand is there's at least the open channel of communication. That they would resolve it among themselves, that it doesn't have to be officially implemented, but there's. Of course, a mutual interest in having privacy and screening. So, yes. Oh, but it would be worth at least adding on the open fireplace. We had already. Well, then, uh, these, uh, these plans that you're looking at had already been submitted, but, uh, since talking with the neighbor pointed that out, we definitely. Wholeheartedly would change that to, at the very least, a gas, uh, fire burning unit. Uh, and if, if it's not allowed at all, that's, that's.
Yeah, I think, again, I think gas is provided that it's got, you know, no spark. That's the whole idea and smoke.
A spark arrestor, yeah.
Yeah. So. Ms. Chalmers.
Yeah, no, I was, I was actually pleased to see the updated plan. Um. And I was sort of curious to hear what staff was thinking and. What the rest of my commissioners, commissioners were thinking on the wall. Cause I was correct, as, uh, Mr. Holder correctly mentioned, I was the one that raised it last time about it being. Sort of a, quite a big blocky tall wall and whether that could be broken up. Um, so if there's anything anyone here wants to suggest on the commission, I would like to hear it. Um. But I feel like I, and I know we talked about this last week as well, but I, I could make the findings. For the tree removal and the slope use permit FAR. And the variance.
Great.
Thank you.
Brock.
I think, I think you've done a fantastic job. It, it's, uh, quite a change from what we looked at before. And, um. You know, I, I think, um. I've done enough hikes where I've seen big oak trees come down and I, uh, stressed oak tree would not be my favorite thing to have in my backyard. So. Um, I, I can see getting rid of the oak tree also. So, um, I can support the application. The only thing with the wall I might suggest is, is, um. That you could, uh, stake it and flag it. And, and have staff take a look at it before, before you go ahead and. Just see what it looks like in, in reality, but. I, I think it'll be okay, honestly.
Mm hmm.
Um, I, I guess I don't have a lot to say that hasn't already been said, um. In terms of the. I guess the fire pits, the, the item that's not on here, I, I don't think, I think if fire department allows it, then, um. That's, that's okay with me. Um, and then the, the garage variance. The variant setback variance for the garage, I think I can make the findings for that. Uh, and same with the slope use permit or area ratio exception and the, the tree removal. Um. The, the design review, I, I do appreciate the work that's gone into it. It's, it looks. Looks much better than, in my opinion, than when we first saw the house. Um, I think it's a more appropriate size and, and, uh. It, it also helps that you can use the area around the oak tree that was there before. Um, I, I think, to me, looking at that, at that wall. Um, I think it's gonna be less intrusive than what's there now. And I think that since it's got, you know, it's a sort of one and a half story wall. Cause it's got, you know, it's on a slope, it's got a big crawl space, but it's got that deck above it that I think will provide some, uh. You know, variation. Um, so I think I, I would be. Um. Like I would be okay with. Something to, to break that up, but I think that I'm okay with it as it is.
Right. Are they planning on, I, my understanding is you're planning on putting plants and things down there in front of that wall?
Uh, I agree with my fellow commissioners. I think it's, uh, you did a really nice job. It's a nice design. I always thought it was a nice design from the beginning, but I think it's even better now. Um, and it's, it's, uh, I think it'll fit nicely with the character of the neighborhood and I think it'll look nice and. Congratulate you on working with your neighbors. Uh, which is really hard to do sometimes, but you did a good job with it. Um, so I can make the findings, um. With the six inches taken off the, uh, side. Yeah.
So given what all my fellow commission commissioners have said, and given there isn't really any strong opinions about the wall, I think it's. Fine. I think we'll just approve it at it as it is, um, on the understanding that you'll, you'll put the plantings in. Okay.
And then we need to add something about the correction of the three oak trees at the top to, to what, what, what was the plan to put there?
You can do that in the motion to.
I don't know what the name of the tree.
Which, which you'll be very skilled at doing.
I don't, don't wanna interrupt. I just wanna mention, we do have a hand that got raised on.
All right, let's, uh, let's listen to the hand that got raised.
So Mike Allen, you should be able to unmute and speak.
Yeah.
Hi, well, yes, I, I do appreciate, um, everything that's been done to reduce. The, uh, mass of the project. It, it still seems a little bit large to us, but, um. Uh, one of the things we have concerns about that was touched upon is. The, the windows on the, on the west side. Which look directly on our deck and into our primary living areas. And so. Just as Andy had, uh. Asked for, we would appreciate some screening on the, uh, west side as well. Both for ourselves and, uh, for them as well as privacy. So that, that was the only thing that, uh. I wanted to say.
All right. Uh, thanks, Dr. Ellen. Anything else?
No, no.
Okay. So hearing no other comments, uh. Would someone like to make a motion, Natasha?
All right, um. I'd like to make a motion to approve project number twenty four ten. Do you actually need me to read all the? Variances? No, okay, good. Um, project twenty four ten. Subject to an additional condition of approval, correcting the tree plantings. From. The three oak trees at the north side of the property to the evergreen. Strawberry, strawberry trees.
Our Buddhist Marina.
Our Buddhist Marina. I learned something new. I only know a strawberry tree. Um. And subject to a second condition of a, an additional condition of approval to reduce the patio by six inches. Um, nope. Not the patio.
That's already in.
Oh, it's already in there. Oh, I'm, okay. We don't need to mention that then. Okay. So it's just that one change. That's it. We just need a second. That's it.
I'll second.
Uh, just to add, is it possible to add in that consideration for the neighbors for screening?
Oh, we should do that. Yeah.
Let's put that in.
Okay. So.
Should be given to the neighbors' concerns regarding privacy, uh, to, to landscape. Uh, appropriately to mitigate the concerns of the neighbors.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah. Um, somebody should second that.
Yeah, you did.
I seconded you, but then he added something. So are you adding that to your motion?
Yes, I added that. So could someone second that, please?
I'll second that as well.
Thank you. All right, let's take a roll call vote.
Uh, Commissioner Wagstaff.
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
Commissioner Hall.
Yes.
Commissioner Chalmers.
Yes.
And Chair Swisher.
Yes.
Hey, the project is approved, motion's approved, five to zero, subject to a ten day appeal period. And you can appeal by submitting the forms to the city clerk and paying the appeal fee.
Excellent. Congratulations.
Thank you. To you. Reading the truth. Oh, how are those final guy? How's your lady? That was quick.
Starting at seven thirty. That's a long operation.
But she's gonna make it?
Yeah.
She did quite well, actually better than I thought she would. All right, so let's continue.
Oh, okay.
Where is our?
That's the summary of the council.
Uh, agenda, agenda. There we go. Thanks.
I feel like we just talked about.
All right, so our next, uh, make recommendations to the city council on the annual report on the general plan and housing element.
We just.
Uh, right, didn't we just?
Just talked to.
We just talked about this.
I know, it's like, it's already the three months update.
Every year, this, the planning commission's, uh, required to receive a report on the, an update of the general plan. But as you all remember, uh, the general plan was just approved in September. So you're pretty familiar with what. Has happened, or it was, it was just approved, a lot of the programs were actually. Um, that were accomplished in twenty twenty four were ones that were adopted as part of the general plan and the ordinances. That went with the general plan and housing element. So, um, I don't need to. Go into that at all, but I did wanna summarize just the housing units, cause that's maybe more interesting that. The planning commission, you approved nineteen units at one thousand Drake's Landing in twenty twenty four. Once new single family residents at three sixty Villa La Paz. And there was three ADUs associated with projects that you considered. And the building department received twenty four building permit applications for ADUs. And one application for the Magnolia Village project, which has eighteen units. And they issued twenty building permits for ADUs. And issued one building permit for a new single family residence at two thirty three Montevista. Um, so that, that I don't have anything more to report unless you have any questions for me, but. We're recommending that you receive the report and recommend that the city council, uh. Do, is it adoption? I've already forgotten. You could just, I guess, you could recommend adoption of the annual report and then we'll send it off to the state.
So this table A, that just shows all the ADUs that have been built or have been approval requested. Is that what that is? And. Housing development applications submitted.
There's so many, so many tables in this report.
Which I guess is just a front page.
Yeah, so what, what they, they have us report on all of the ones that were approved. By the planning commission, all the ones that were applied for, all the ones that building permits were issued, all the ones that building, like that were finalized. So, um, they, they request a lot of information.
But like all these ADUs will count towards the, the number, right?
Definitely.
Interesting, okay.
So I was sort of looking at these numbers, which were a little overwhelming, but, um. It looks like out of the nine hundred and seventy units we're supposed to have by twenty thirty. We've got about eighty something.
Eighty or eight hundred?
Eighty.
Oh.
I think that sounds about right.
You mean actually, you mean actually built?
Yeah.
Okay, cause there's.
Built or. Yeah, or so there's, um.
Built or approved.
We have ninety one. Completed or permit issued because we get to count some from the prior planning period. And so there was a. Um, I think of it maybe June of twenty twenty. Two or twenty twenty three that we could count all the units and we had the forty four unit. Um, transitional housing project on South Felicio that was counting towards that. So that's what we have ninety one. That we can count. And then we have another sixty two. That are approved by you or have sort of pending building permit application. So, um, that's about. A hundred and fifty three. Towards the nine hundred and seventy nine.
Better get cooking.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we're, we're in compliance because we identified the, the properties, right? So the sites, yeah. I'm not properties, the sites, yeah. Well, for example, like this three sixty Villa Paz, that was one that came before the planning commission. So what, is that, is that on this list because?
So it's because you approved a new unit, it's on the list and then it'll be on the list next year if they pull the building permit.
And is that because there was no existing?
No existing dwelling there, it was a vacant lot.
Okay.
And same with two thirty three Montevista was probably on a prior, it was a prior approval, you just extended the approval. Um, but they didn't pull the building permit until two thousand twenty four, but that was just a vacant lot, close to city hall. Yeah, I was trying to think of some other way to summarize this and haven't quite figured out how. The, the city council receives a PDF, so it won't be as much paper.
They, they can have ours.
True.
Uh, no, we have not. I, I, I think we might have mentioned at the last meeting that there was, it was supposed to go on the market, we had heard recently. I haven't seen it, but we, I, we did reach out to Albertson's actually just in the past day or two, asking for an update. So. Hopefully at your next meeting, I can give you some more concrete information.
What about North Magnolia?
So their building permit is still pending and they're just working towards completing items. So I, I would. Expect them to pull a permit to demolish the existing buildings soon, but they haven't pulled the permit.
Did it ever sell?
I don't know. I think it's still the same owner that's pursuing it.
You're still planning on pursuing a building there?
Yeah, that's my understanding. Like they're still pursuing, um, taking care of issues that are related to the building permit application. So I have a recommended motion at the top of the staff report. If someone could just make that motion, that would be what we would need. Yeah, I can read it. It's move that the planning commission accept the report and recommend that the city council accept. The report and direct staff to submit the report to the state.
So moved. Or do I have to repeat that?
I second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Wagstaff.
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
Commissioner Swisher.
Yes.
Commissioner Chalmers.
Yes.
And Commissioner Hall. The motion carries. Thank you.
The agenda, business items, we did that planning commission, uh, we have to approve the mission meeting minutes for September seventeenth. Uh, Mr. Wagstaff recused, January twenty eighth, Mr. Wagstaff recused. February eleventh, twenty twenty five and February twenty fifth, twenty twenty five.
I had, I sent you two emails today. As I read the minutes. Um, one was just a little, I mean, it was like a typo already. But then the other one, I just wanted to clarify what I was saying.
Some clarifications from Commissioner Chalmers. Um, I don't know if you want me to read them. Okay, so I'll just go through them, just so we have them for the record. Um. The three Heather Way minutes, page four, second paragraph, um, would rewrite it to say she was able to look around and was given the impression. That what they claim about not using the upper area as a third floor is accurate. She shared photos of the three dormers. And then, um, to modify another comment to say is worried about a process whereby the commission reviews plans and provides a fair and reasonable opinion. With the opinion rendered become irrelevant when something different is built. And then a last sentence to modify what can make it fair for everyone else who goes through the planning application process and complies with the rules. As they're supposed to. And then on page six, the second paragraph, um, add the message is going to be that it's okay to. add, the message is going to be that it's okay to build without complying with approved plans. And then a correction to the 56 Diane Lane minutes, just to correct an of to off on one page, which we can take care.
Also, if you could, I was not recused because due to a financial conflict of interest.
Oh, for the three Heather?
Yeah.
Or it is because you live, your property is your financial conflict of interest.
Oh.
Oh, I was like, what were you? It's not a geographical conflict of interest?
Well, the geographical distance is the they it's if you own property within the geographical.
Oh, I see. It becomes a monetary issue.
Financial?
A financial conflict.
Wow, okay.
The value of your home.
I thought maybe.
It may impact. It may impact your property values one way or the other.
And and yes, I made those changes because I want to, I think we really stressed in the meeting, the three Heather Way that we we did not want to set a precedent. Remember when they came in and they had received approval for one thing, but then they built something else. And I think we discussed at length that we wanted to ensure that we didn't set a precedent, so.
Right.
Right. Okay, should we?
Yep, so approve the minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes that we've discussed?
Oh, I can make a motion to approve the minutes of September 17, 2024, and then the ones of January 28, February 11, and February 25 of 2025.
I'll second.
Commissioner Wagstaff.
Yes.
Fisher Campbell.
Yes.
Fisher Swisher.
Yes.
Fisher Chalmers.
Yes.
Fisher Hulk.
Yes.
All right, next up on the agenda is a motion for adjournment, the next regular meeting.
Planning commissioners reports.
Oh, planning commissioner, I don't see that. Oh, I see. B, planning commissioner reports. Do we have any planning commissioner reports?
No.
Actually, I if we could, I'd like to request that pages be printed in the same direction.
Oh, sure. Oh, yes. Me too.
The plans for the last one, it was like.
Yeah, sorry about that. I didn't put the right checkbox.
There we go.
I mean, I guess if they're already printed, don't reprint them.
All right, seeing no other planning commissioner reports.
Are we going to cancel the April 18 or reschedule? What are we doing about that?
So there's two of you can't make April 8. I'm won't be here April 8 either. So I don't know the other.
I can, I can, I can be here, but.
It's spring break, so.
Yeah, I can. I'll be as far as I know around, but if it's spring break, maybe we should.
That's my my bigger concern is that the public is not going to be happy about that, and we have some controversial applications on that.
I thought April 8 was one of ones on your list that you were going not because I did not have it. Yeah, you already had. Content, yeah.
So the next meeting is March 25.
The next meeting is March 25.
Correct.
And then we can, we still have time to notice other applicants if they want to squeeze on that one.
All right. March 25, okay. All right, well, seeing no other issues. Is there a motion for adjournment?
I will move. We adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor? All right, we're adjourned.
Thank you.